Wrong words, oh no So I keep my mouth shut and I listen Afraid I'd lose you if I didn't Can we find what we're missing? A compromise? So I keep my shoes on and I leave it We're on thin ice, winter season Can we find a single reason not to say goodbye? If I said what's on my mind Would you stay with me tonight? If I said what's on my mind Would that make you run and hide? Run and hide? Run and hide? If I said what's on my mind Would that make you run and hide? Would that make you run and hide? Run and hide? Run and hide? Oh Would that make you run and hide?
Don't know what to do anymore I'm out of options, nothing's working I'm out of service Come help me now, I'm fucking nervous I'm trying but can't scratch the surface
So I keep my mouth shut and I listen Afraid I'd lose you if I didn't Can we find what we're missing? A compromise? So I keep my shoes on and I leave it We're on thin ice, winter season Can we find a single reason not to say goodbye? Always do it on my own, so I gotta get through it And the only thing I know is to love what I'm doing Never give up, never slow till I finally prove it Never listen to the no's, I just wanna keep moving Keep my head up when I act Head up, that's a fact Never looking back, I'ma keep myself on track Keep my head up staying strong Always moving on Feel I don't belong, tell my thoughts to move along Push myself to be the best Die with no regrets Live with every thought to spread And I had so many dreams Then you hit your teens Life ain't really what it seems Try to find out what it means Always do it on my own, so I gotta get through it And the only thing I know is to love what I'm doing Never give up, never slow till I finally prove it Never listen to the no's, I just wanna keep moving Yeah, I put out all this heart, it's my only medicine, yeah Everything I do, I'm just being genuine, yeah I'm sick of being screwed, feel my own adrenaline, yeah I do just what I do, and I hope you let me in, let me in, yeah I'm grateful, oh yeah Able, oh yeah I'm stable, oh yeah No label, oh yeah You know me, I have only a path I'm lonely, but damn, I'm going to win I don't want no fake love, I want the real stuff Everybody listen up, cuz I'll only say it once I'ma show you all the path, if you want it bad I'ma show you where it's at, yeah, I'm never done I'll be number one Working hella hard until I catch just what I want, yeah Rise just like the sun, yeah Fatal like a gun, shooter's gonna die Always do it on my own, so I gotta get through it And the only thing I know is to love what I'm doing Never give up, never slow till I finally prove it Never listen to the no's, I just wanna keep moving Yeah, I put out all this heart, it's my only medicine, yeah Everything I do, I'm just being genuine, yeah I'm sick of being screwed, feel my own adrenaline, yeah I do just what I do, and I hope you let me in, let me in, yeah I'm grateful, oh yeah Able, oh yeah I'm stable, oh yeah No label, oh yeah You know me, I have only a path I'm lonely, but damn, I'm going to win, yeah Over the edge Feel like I'm floating through the air The pain I felt is paid for All is said and done Oh I am restricted, fixed upon the web I need to kick the habit that my mind is breathing in Break out, I've got to see Spent all my life holding all of it closely I played it innocent, a feel of discontent I'm finally facing it all Fearless Burning the bridge that keeps us I'm here and I'm feeling fearless Exaggerated, that's what you assume The story's over now, I must conclude I am conflicted, watching where I step Still hanging in the balance Not the life I want to live I want to take it all, standing tall Fear outweighed the person you are Oh Break out, I've got to see Spent all my life holding all of it closely I played it innocent, a feel of discontent I'm finally facing it all Fearless
Girl, you got me shook from the way your body looks Got me riding hooks, got me feeling like a ruck I don't do it by the book, but for you, I'll take a look Don't know what your mama took Sweet and spicy like a cook, yeah I'll keep it real, let's make a deal Buy you a meal if you just let me feel Get out your heels, grab on the wheel Back to my place at the top of the hill Don't have regrets, I know what's next She need a fresh, I'll be back in a sec Look at them legs, don't make me beg Back to the room, let me show you my bed, yeah
Touching on your body feels like taking on a drug You got me feeling good, yeah you got me feeling numb Everything you do, I can't seem to get enough You got me feeling good, yeah you got me feeling numb Touching on your body feels like taking on a drug Got me feeling good, yeah you got me feeling numb Everything you do, I can't seem to get enough You got me feeling good, yeah you got me feeling numb
I could look at you all day Watch the way them hips sway Love your body so I pray Don't you dare take it away Can't control what I say Lost my mind cuz your frame Ay, girl, what's your name? Lit me up just like a flame Body emotion, I feel the commotion Beyond you like lotion I'm honest and broken, I flow like the ocean I feel you were chosen to fix me, I'm broken My heart that you stolen, ay Stay with me, play with me, lay with me Hate to see when you leave Chemistry feels like it's destiny, I just want you Playing next to me, and I really don't want you to
Touching on your body feels like taking on a drug You got me feeling good, yeah you got me feeling numb Everything you do, I can't seem to get enough You got me feeling good, yeah you got me feeling numb Touching on your body feels like taking on a drug You got me feeling good, yeah you got me feeling numb Everything you do, I can't seem to get enough You got me feeling good, yeah you got me feeling numb
Yeah, she's got some nice long hair And you know that she's a bad chick All the boys stare, can't help it, it's a habit Clothes that you wear, shorts, skirt, and jacket Just wanna girl, I don't wanna mattress I just wanna have it, I just gotta have it Rumors all around, say her body is fantastic All natural, not a piece of refurbished plastic Head to her toes, yeah they say that she's a lass Yeah, those whispers all around say she has a Till I see it, so I want a demonstration And I've always been better, depends on education Need a message, back what I'm saying They say this shit, I know she's really complicated But that only makes it better, and it's got me so fixated And I'm not the type to reel round, I've never hesitated But it's got me capping, so the game, I'm gonna play it
Her body like a coffin She likes to keep the party going These rumors got me feeling lonely I want that body, baby, show me She's got a body like a coffin She likes to keep the party going These rumors got me feeling lonely I want that body, baby, show me I want that body, baby, show me
Yeah, I heard you look good in a sundress I heard you look good when you're undressed I heard you like to get away I heard you like to stay out late I heard you had a couple boyfriends I heard they didn't treat you right I heard you're hated by your girlfriends Cuz all the guys want you tonight, yeah They say she's too hot, they say she's too cold Where she came from, nobody really knows They say she looks young, but since she acts old From everything I've heard, all the boys say She was sent from the heavens But I'm not too sure that this girl is a blessing She's got the devil's eyes, and they'll cut you like a weapon She's stuck in my mind like a bad obsession Got bad intentions
She's got a body like a coffin She likes to keep the party going These rumors got me feeling lonely I want that body, baby, show me She's got a body like a coffin She likes to keep the party going These rumors got me feeling lonely I want that body, baby, show me I don't know what you want Let's have a bit of fun till I downfall My love, if you feel like I do right now Don't say you're on the run to the other side, my love You say you wanna try, but you never do Sugar, there's a reason why we lose You say you wanna cry, but you never do Sugar, there's a reason why we lose I don't know what you want Let's have a bit of fun till I downfall My love, if you feel like I do right now Don't say you're on the run to the other side, my love You say you wanna try, but you never do Sugar, there's a reason why we lose You say you wanna try, but you never do Sugar, there's a reason why we lose You say you wanna cry, but you never do Sugar, there's a reason why we lose
In the darkest night, I saw your eyes A sense of threat that I can't forget I wanna know who you are Is what I need to know So take my hand and let our fears go Take me to your jungle Where the rain is warm and the birds fly Take me to your kingdom Yeah, take me to the, yeah, take me to the Take me to your jungle Where the rain is warm and the birds fly Take me to your kingdom Yeah, take me to the, to the jungle, jungle In the darkest night, I saw your eyes A sense of threat that I can't forget I wanna know who you are Is what I need to know So take my hand and let our fears go No words describe your savage life Ooh, let's give it a go like our purpose shows I wanna know who you are Is what I need to know So take my hand and let our fears go Take me to your jungle Where the rain is warm and the birds fly Take me to your kingdom Yeah, take me to the, yeah, take me to the Take me to your jungle Where the rain is warm and the birds fly Take me to your kingdom Yeah, take me to the, to the jungle, jungle Say I'm good at it, but I'm just couldn't start it All my eyes on the target, no, no Till the battle's won, still kingdom go I'll never run Best to give me your loyalty Cuz I'm taking the world to see They'll be calling me, calling me They'll be calling me royalty Best to give me your loyalty Cuz I'm taking the world to see They'll be calling me, calling me They'll be calling me royalty They say I'm dangerous Cuz I broke all their cages Know I will sit and take it, no, no They left me for dead, I guess they'll never learn Every time I break, there's just more pain to burn They'll never, never, never learn Till the battle's won And I've got to see If you don't hear from me There's nothing to say If you're not here with me Just stay away If you're not here with me I don't wanna be found If you're not here for me I don't wanna be found I don't wanna be 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 If you don't hear from me If you don't hear from me If you don't hear from me There's nothing to say If you're not here with me Just stay away If you're not here with me I don't wanna be found If you're not here for me I don't wanna be found
Always do it on my own, so I gotta get through it And the only thing I know is to love what I'm doing Never give up, never slow till I finally prove it Never listen to the no's, I just wanna keep moving Keep my head up when I act Head up, that's a fact Never looking back, I'ma keep myself on track Keep my head up staying strong Always moving on Feel I don't belong, tell my thoughts to move along Push myself to be the best Die with no regrets Push myself to be the best, die with no regrets Live with every breath, see my message start to spread And I had so many dreams, then you hit your teens Life ain't really what it seems, try to find out what it means Always do it on my own, so I gotta get through it And the only thing I know is to love what I'm doing Never give up, never slow till I finally prove it Never listen to the no's, I just wanna keep moving Yeah, I put out all this heart, it's my only medicine, yeah Everything I do, I'm just being genuine, yeah I'm sick of being screwed, feel my own adrenaline Yeah, I do just what I do And I hope you let me in, let me in, yeah I'm grateful, oh yeah Able, oh yeah I'm stable, oh yeah No label, oh yeah You know me, I have only a path I'm lonely, but damn, I'm going to win I don't want no fake love, I want the real stuff Everybody listen up, cuz I'll